I got you.
Are we ready to start?
Yes, Teresa, we're all set on this end.
Okay, then, why don't we have everybody stand for the pledge, please?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, thank you. So we have Jess, Barb, and Sue are all excused for tonight's meeting. Do we have any other changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda.
Then I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay.
Motion by Dale, second by Brad, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried. Now, we need a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of personnel items, including the employment history of a particular person or persons. Motion by Brad, second by Dale, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried, and we will be back in a minute.
Carrie and Teresa, I sent you the link for the Zoom separately in a text as well as you should have gotten it down under invite. Yep, we're gonna go to my office.
Okay. All right, I needed a motion to come back to exit out of executive session.
A motion.
Motion by Carrie, second by Dale, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried. We have our presentations, first up is Kristen and Jerry.
All right, thank you, everyone, for letting us come and present tonight. Mr. Prezi and I were excited to go and complete this presentation at NISBA in at the state conference, but because that was canceled, we thank you for letting us pare down our 75-minute conversation down to about 10 minutes for you tonight. As we go through some of the slides, we left them in just so you could see what we would be presenting statewide and let you see some of the things that we wanted to showcase about Salamanca and some of the things we showcase each time we present outside of Salamanca. But if you do want to go more in-depth on any of the slides after tonight, please feel free to reach out to us and we'll be happy to cover anything that you'd like. So every time we present outside of Salamanca, we like to start with where we are, just so people have an idea of where we are. When we say we're from New York, especially outside of the state, they say, well, are you in New York City? We like to bring them back down to the other side of the state to give them a little bit of clarification. The snapshot again with some great pictures from Levi and also from the students with the drones. It was a great showcase of our snapshot for the district. We have our pre-K 12 to campuses, our UPK and kindergarten classrooms. For Wednesday, our 1,402 students with 190 classified students ages three to 21. And again, some great showcases as pictures come in. Anytime you'd like a picture showcased in one of our presentations outside of Salamanca, please drop us a note and we'll be happy to add it to anything that we do. So this is where this really stemmed from. The pandemic altered so many things that we had to do. For special education, you really had to think outside the box. What were we doing before, what worked, what didn't? And how were we going to service so many students with so many different needs, especially when there was no school in session? And at this slide, I'd like to just take a minute to thank the board, administration, the teachers, the staff, especially the related service providers and the special education teachers who really thought outside the box on how to get students engaged and how to provide services like OT, PT, speech, and some really intensive RTI services and special education services over Zoom and how to engage those students during the pandemic. So a lot of what we're going to cover today are some things that we did as a district, but by we, it's all those people that I just mentioned, because without them doing what they did, we would not be able to do what we did to help the students that we have here in Salamanca. So our concept was to infinity and beyond. How can we take what happened during the pandemic and make changes to the future of what we do in special education? So today's agenda, we're going to cover a few things. Parent engagement, how can you look at your district's needs moving forward? Give you a little bit of an insight of our life on a daily basis with our ABCs of LRE. The 30,000-foot view for CSE meetings and evaluations. We're going to briefly touch on SOS because of last week, there are some changes coming from the state. And then career skills, what has been done, especially in our total classrooms across the district? And a shout out to Mr. Seibert, Ms. McGurk, Ms. Mahaney, and Ms. Nelson at the high school 12-room ones and what they do for our students, but also to all of these teachers with STEAM and some of our other endeavors that we're able to use some of our special education funds for that our students take part in. So in our major presentation at the state level, we were going to show this. And if you have not seen this video yet, please take some time to go and take a look at it. Mindset is everything, and Welcome to Holland by Renee Jones outlines what it feels like to sit in a parent's shoes when they're first told that their child may have a disability and what it's like to go through that process. So if you have a moment, you have a copy of the presentation, but if not, just Google it, YouTube, Welcome to Holland, and take a minute to take a look at the video, please.
Awesome. All right, oh, thanks. Fantastic, all right, great. And it's Holland as in the country, not New York, so FYI, where the tulips are. So, right, so the first piece we were talking about, we wanted to have a conversation about is the parent engagement piece. And one thing you might think, well, in a pandemic, right? Well, what the hell the heck are we gonna get folks to show up to meetings and be part of meetings? And whether it's a, you know, family that's, you know, quarantined, or whatever the case may be. What I will tell you is this, that we had with our staff, it was said that we have employees in the district in terms of related service providers and special education teachers, really went above and beyond to try to provide the best possible programming with families and engage them on a regular basis, whether it was through Zoom, through personal notes, and we'll go through a couple of pieces that we might have utilized to engage families on a greater broader basis. But essentially, we've seen during COVID pandemic, last two years, year and a half, school, last year and a half in terms of school, an increase from, let's say, 30 to 40% current parent participation in CSE meetings, CPSC meetings, to around 90% of our families are participating on a regular basis in our CSE and CPSC meetings. And I can tell you, as a new administrator to the district, starting this job in a pandemic can be a bit of a challenge, but the staff that we have here and the engagement we have with our families and the foundation we play really did bring us to a great point where we're really having the aging conversation with families and not just during the meetings, but also outside of the meetings too, in between meetings. Because, you know, part of that, that building that relationship and connection with the families is really important to us in that regard. And that's for our students that are in-house, as well as our students that go to outside placements, either through BOCs or a private organization. So, so we've really done, I feel like we've done a really great job as a district engaging families throughout this process. So that's kind of a little quick snapshot of part of the conversation we would have had. So this gets into more detail in terms of some of the things we might have done as part of the outreach. So one of the things we did do was utilizing, because you, and some of you may or may not know, a lot of legalities, a lot of dates, lots of forms that need to be completed. I'm sure Dale, as you know, that had to be completed and that also need to be done as a timely manner. We're really built around timeframes. So we needed some support and some help in order to get that done. We utilize our SROs, our counseling staff, our service providers, our family liaisons, our transportation staff. All those folks were such a huge, huge part of that engagement process with our families and getting our families to feel like they're in part, they're part of the process and that we actually are trying to reach out and support them the best way as possible. So that's one of the pieces that we really utilize is using our resources that we have in-house as much as possible, reach out to our families and engage them as much as possible. Social media, as you know, I do a bang-up job as a district. Levi, thank you for all the, all the social media that you do utilize for us. That's a huge part of what we do too, engaging families with you through social media. And the other pieces are here of some more district-based types of things. For example, utilization of hotspots. I've talked to districts and specialized directors of other districts. They didn't have the wherewithal to be able to provide hotspots to families or have school buses with Wi-Fi in parts of the town so people can access and that type of the internet and Wi-Fi. So just some of the things we did as a district were fantastic. And these were some of the things that we had wanted to share with this NISBA boards across the state to say, things that we've done here are really some really advanced types of things, types of forward thinking. So the piece that I want to highlight is the second-to-last bullet, just because we're talking about special education. CSE and CPSC transitioned all meetings to Zoom, and we're still doing those meetings remotely right now. We're still doing Zoom. And again, our numbers are still up in terms of parent engagement, whether it's through the phone, through a phone call, or through a Zoom. The fact that the parents don't necessarily have to come in, that they can take their half-hour lunch break and be able to join a meeting, rather than having to take a half-day from work, was a great, was a great advantage for us. As far as I'm concerned, moving forward, that may be something we want to consider looking into, even when we do get back to normal, right? Offer parents the opportunity to run us through Zooms or phone calls as well. I'd much rather have people face-to-face if we possibly could, absolutely 100%, but I want to make it accessible for families to be able to engage in the process as much as possible. So we continue to provide those supports through Zoom and phone as well. So it's been a great opportunity for us, for sure, as a district. And these are just a couple of links here, of course, so you know that you're aware of, our class pages, unified classroom and such. So just some of the things that we utilize as a district. Now, the next piece is a little bit, and I want to spend sometime, not a ton of time, because I don't want to overwhelm anybody or bore anybody for that matter. But one of the things, the biggest things in terms of parent engagement is this piece here, okay? All of these acronyms that we utilize in education in general, and these are just some, these are just some that are specific to special education. So one of the things that we can, we try to do is try to explain things or demystify the process for families, try to engage in them more regularly. So as much as we possibly can, we try not to use acronyms like this. So for example, I think for the most part, most people know what an IEP is, right? What the initial stands for is Individualized Education Plan, right? Or CPSC is Committee on Preschool Special Education versus CSE, which is Committee on Special Education for Schools. But you might not know what OPWDD is, okay? You might not know what ICT means or TBI, right? So what we try to do is try to be as specific as possible to families and say, rather than saying, well, your child has been classified as a student with OHI. What does OHI mean, right? OHI is another health impairment. It's one of the 13 classifications we allow, we are allowed to provide classified students with disabilities at in the CSE and CPSC. So what we try to do is we try to take these scary acronyms that are, can produce some anxiety in families. I really try to explain those down, then bring them into real layman's terms, so things that people can understand in a more manageable way. And I think we do a nice job. We do take a lot of time in our CSE meetings, we absolutely do. We can probably rock out our CSE meetings about 20 minutes if we wanted to, but then we're not doing the service to our families and letting them know that we care about them or willing to spend the additional time on their children because we do care about their kids. And that's why we spend the time to take, to explain out some of these acronyms like this to the families. Quite as, as removed, I guess, if you will. Because LRE is least restrictive environment. We want to be as least restrictive as possible, include all of our kids as much as we can in general education setting. Okay, so this would be a lot more of an activity, but we're gonna do that now. But what I want to do is, and I kind of want to highlight this just really quickly for you, because this is part of the least restrictive environment idea. We have a continuum of services that we provide to all students. Now, what you're gonna like is this, this little seamless marriage. Where's Dr. Simbridge? There she is, back there. You're gonna see some of this in her presentation, where we talk about continuum of services, universal supports, individualized supports, right? And specialized placements. We, that's part of our vernacular as well in special education. We have different tiers of support or continuum of those services. And those are all based on the Part 200 and 300 regulations. Those regulations, Part 200 are the state regulations that we must follow. Part 300 are the federal regulations that we must follow through the IDEA. And we go, we try to go with as least restrictive as possible, and we get more restrictive as needed for the child. Now, things that impact LRE, again, we're talking about space, certification of staff, family transgency, funding, things like that all always impact our least restrictive environment. But we've been fortunate, and I can tell you, as a year and a half I've been in this role, I have never had a concern about being able to provide a program for a student that needed it because our school district has been so supportive and resourceful of all of our kids, particularly our students with disabilities. So we've really been able to provide quite a continued services for our kids. We also do offer some building-based services that necessarily fall under the guise of CPSC or CSE, and those are things like occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech, and counseling services. So we do provide those in a tiered format to the general education population through our NCSS, a multi-tiered system of supports. So that's where we kind of marry the gen ed to the special ed and those tiers of support. Just a quick little list here, these are some of the services that we offer, right? The continuum of services would be things like consultant teacher services or integrated co-teaching, self-contained classroom, we might call 15-1 or 12-11, different ratios of kids. Meaning 12-1 would be meaning 12 students to one teacher to one aide, and that would be the capacity of the class. So we have different types of programming that we offer. There's a continuum of, as I said, least restrictive to more restrictive, and we try to work through for all kids and try to keep it as less restrictive as possible.
So I'm gonna jump in and going back to some of the slides that Jerry went over. A lot of the things are things we know, we know here in this district, because we're watching it happen every day. But as we created this presentation, this was to really work with other boards to really help other boards understand ways you can think outside the box and be creative. We've been blessed here. We have been able, with the help of everyone, to think outside the box and really do everything for all of our students at max capacity. And I think on the screen it shows from moving to different technologies. Even before the pandemic, we were utilizing iPads in order to do some of our psychological testing and to do some of our speech and OT and PT testing, and then that changed over. And one of the greatest things that I've seen is that by sitting on some of the state panels, we have been able to showcase Salamanca at the state level with things that we were able to do that other districts had a difficult time in making that transition. And they've reached out to us and we've helped them with some of the things that we were able to put in place, being in a rural community. So again, I thank you to everyone for your help with all of that. So SOS is something that anyone in seven through 12 education with a certification in special education had heard a lot about prior to the pandemic. The pandemic put a little bit of a slowdown to it, but then deadlines came back. SOS is a statement of continued eligibility, and it's for teachers that teach in grades seven through 12 on special education certification. If you're teaching a class like Jerry stated, on the LRE that is a little bit more restrictive, a 15-1, a 12-1, a 6-1, or an 8-1, at the level of grade seven through 12, teachers now had to get an additional certification that is called the SOS. The reason why we talked about this is that we really had to think outside the box and how would you schedule? And Chris and Lynn and the counselors were wonderful and really thinking outside the box with our staff. Even though the SOS mandate was delayed by a year, they still started to look at the schedule and how can we within the district provide what we need with the staff we have and be able to make sure that all students are serviced correctly. Many of our students are, sorry, many of our staff at the high school have received their SOS that have their special education certifications. So as a district, we are very blessed. Moving forward, the state is starting to look at different certifications again and the certification criterias of teachers, not just special education. So rather than go into full description of SOS for tonight, SOS is on here. And if you do want to learn more about it, please take a look at the state website under the statement of continued eligibility. So as I stated before, there's a lot of things in the IEP, and without the help of the teachers, the support staff here within the district, there are many things we wouldn't be able to do. On IEPs starting at age 15, all students have to have what is called transition. It talks about career skills, and it's something that in the district, we start talking about with our students in kindergarten, when they're exposed to some of the counseling staff, working with them on what do they want to be when they grow up? And it continues on. As a cohort, we decided that grade seven, rather than age 15, would be when we would really start to look at those transition pieces of the IEP, because it's a natural transition within our district to move from Santa Fe intermediate to the high school. It really allowed the students to think about what type of courses do you want to take when you move to that next level, rather than waiting till that age 15. And there's many districts across the state that don't do that. And by the time they start talking about it at age 15, they may have lost an amazing window to start to guide students. The pieces that are on the IEP are education and training. What do they want to do? Employment, where do they want to be when they grow up? And we all know it changes, and we remind them that every time we meet. Independent living skills, do they need help with housing, transportation, scheduling medical appointments? The things that some of us take for granted are things that they may need to learn in school to be successful when they graduate. And then transition needs, what are things that we can help them in those years between ages 15 and if they stay till 21, 21, to help them transition out into the community? And then finally, each year, what are the courses of study they're taking to meet some of those goals? If they want to become a welder, are they looking at a CTE program? If they want to go into human services, what are some of the programs that they can look at, both here in district and overseas? So those transition pieces of the IEP are really critical. And for many districts, especially rural districts across the state, sitting on some of the panels that we sit on, we've learned that this is very difficult for them to find ways to think outside the box to meet these needs. Jerry, I'm gonna jump back to your chart slides in a second. I'm gonna scroll ahead for a minute and talk about the work-based learning program that we do have. So I alluded at the beginning to the high school, that the high school staff has been amazing in thinking outside the box and ways to incorporate transition into their program, from the coffee carts, MJ Express, to the greenhouse and gardening, and really doing some beautiful pieces for the building, not only for throughout the year, but for graduation as well. Parkview grocery, helping with the seniors on senior day. The soup kitchen and volunteering time. Their Christmas crafts and the school bookstore. These are just some of the opportunities that our students have by thinking outside the box of what do we have available and things that they might do in their free time or when they graduate, places that they may feel comfortable going back to volunteer or to work. How do we incorporate that into every day for them? But we also think outside the box for our students that may not be in a smaller class. For our students that may have some difficulties in school, what are other ways that we can get them involved? And how can we, through special education, help with some of those things? Whether it's linking them with career opportunities and Warrior, Warrior TV, whether it's helping with some of the drone purchases to make sure that they're able to have access, and especially with some of the things for kayak. All things that are important to the community, important for the students, and our lifelong transitional skills that will be outstanding for them now and in the future. So last but not least, we'll look back, and Mr. Prezi is just going to talk momentarily about the opportunities that students have for those that have IEPs as far as their diploma types.
Thanks. And of course, I always take an opportunity whenever I can to put my counselor hat back on, because, you know, it's hard not to do. But just, just really, just so you're aware, when it comes to our student disabilities, they have some additional certificate, certificate and diploma options, but our general education students may or may not have. So as you know, we have a region's diploma for all students, but we also have the opportunity for a local diploma for our student disabilities. There are some safety net options, as you can see here in the presentation. You have the low-pass safety net, which means if they score at least a 55 or higher on a region's exam, that would qualify them for a local diploma. Low-class, low-pass safety net with a peel. Again, if they have a score anywhere from a 52 or 54 on one exam, I'm not gonna give all the details, but be aware. And then of those things, and there's also the compensatory safety net option. And again, it's, that's, that's a fun one to explain to people and blast their heads, because it talks about passing a region's exam, English and math at least a 65, then also compensating for a score between 45 and 54. It's a lot of fun science that you, we'll have another conversation about another day if you like. The other pieces that are important for us to be aware of too, in terms of our special education students, not only do they have the opportunity for a local diploma, if they can't meet the region's credentials, there's also the credentials, we call the CDOS commencement credential, which is the Career Development Occupational Studies commencement credential and the Skills and Achievement credential. Those credentials are essentially certificates of attendance or qualification for a student to complete high school. It's important to understand, these are, those are not diplomas. They are different than a region's in the local, they are credentials. So that means students have satisfied a requirement, but it's one of the conversations we have with families quite often, for our students that will qualify for those things, if they're exiting with one of those credentials, we want to provide them with additional supports after high school to give them the opportunities to get the equivalency diploma they may need or look at other, maybe other options for coming back for a high school diploma, if that's appropriate, to complete their studies and be able to move on to the work. So that's just an important piece to know, that those credentials are not diplomas, they are actually, in fact, credentials that are options for some more special education students. Again, region's explanation right here in terms of requirements, the credit requirements, the exam requirements. They're all written here, I don't want to read them all to you, that would be rather boring. But again, as I kind of highlighted those briefly in the previous slide. The commencement credential, again, what's required, that's the main piece for the commencement credential, the CDOS and the Skills and Achievement, is shows work-based learning has been done. That's the important part, is that kids have work skills from these credentials. That's the key really with those two, that's different than their traditional diplomas. And that's what the CDOS is about, and talks about, you can see in there 216 hours of study, as well as part of that is 54 hours of work-based learning minimum, so. Many of our students that attend BOCs programs for CTE, like carpentry, welding, cosmetology, will see CDOS credentials for those things as well. And then the Skills and Achievement, as I mentioned too, that's for the students that are alternatively assessed that do not meet the university reading requirement standards for welding level.
So again, part of our conversation today and part of our presentation was to really work with board members across the state that may not have background or knowledge in special education. Some of the slides that you saw today were our introductions to the activities that we had planned that we were going to walk them through as we went step by step. Special education changes quickly, and we have to stay on top of that. So if there are any questions, we are happy to answer them. If you'd like any more details aboard, and would like us to go into depth on things at another time, we'd be happy to. We've also submitted the bi-yearly plan for special education that I know will be on an upcoming board meeting for you to review our overall plan for special education, where we've been and where we're going. So thank you for everything today, and if there's any questions, please let us know.
Does anyone have any questions?
Does anyone have any questions?
I'm here.
Thank you very much, folks. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Kristen and Jerry. All right. Our next presentation is from Sandy Simbridge.
Hello, everyone. Thank you, Levi. Terrific. I field tested this with my mother and father. And at the end, my dad said, it seems to me like your job has a lot to do with triangles and tiers. So let's see how this works out today. Thank you so much for inviting me. It's entitled MTSS Student Support in Three D. The overview are just the questions that I plan to answer in this presentation. And they are, what is MTSS? Why is it important? What does MTSS mean for our district? What are we currently doing? And what are our next steps? There's that saying of it's important to start where you are, or at least be in the feet that you are. And I'm going to say, well, what feet are we in and what brought us here? So a little history. Then about ten years ago, about two thousand, No Child Left Behind, we had a slew of new tests. The introduction of the term academic intervention services known as AIS. And the focus was helping kids to meet standards based on their performance on state testing. Ten years later, and that enter in pyramid, or excuse me, triangle. Ten years later, two thousand and ten, state comes in with the idea of response to intervention. Intervention stays, academic slides over, and what we add to this notion is tiered support, multiple data points, and now we're also considering the behavioral aspect. Because oftentimes when students are struggling in school, the flip side of the academic is behavioral. Enter in three tiers. That leads us to where we are now, ten years later. Which is the notion of a multi-tiered system of support. All the things slide over from twenty years ago, add to it SEL. And it seems especially important during COVID, but we were thinking about this before COVID. It just became more appropriate to embrace MTSS sooner than later. So with that, that brings in that wonderful pyramid. And to what your appetite for what is to come, I'm going to introduce the reshaping of the triangle so that we get this notion of tiered support two point O. So if we mix academic, behavioral, SEL all together, our focus is the whole child. And that is something that I want you to understand when you walk away from tonight's meeting or tonight's presentation. So let's take a deeper look. I'm newly hired. This is officially beginning of or mid-month seven, seven for me. So I just like to restate what my role is as I currently understand it. So my job is to lead programs to help people get the supports they need to help our students learn, grow and succeed now and in the future. But an important part of that is the notion of preventing and remedying obstacles that get in the way of achieving those aims. And those obstacles could very well be the line that we create as a district. With that, fundamental questions to anything that I do. Who are we serving? How so? Who are we not? Why not? Knowing this, what do we want to do about it together? So take that role and say, all right, slice it down and let's focus on MTSS. What are you going to do there? So an important part of MTSS, one of the first tasks was to work with Penny and the coaches and to get clear about what is tier one, tier two and tier three. So with that, we've instituted the use of big four questions. And the coaches and Penny's team really focus on questions one and two. Where I come in is around that idea of you want students to learn something, you're seeing if they're learning, enter in Sandra. How do we know, how do we know, or how are we going to respond if students don't learn? And what if they already knew? What are we doing for them so that they're, they're moving along as well? So if I were to summarize MTSS, these ideas of responding when students don't learn or when they already know, we're going to come back to that notion of tiered support, which focuses on prevention. We're going to really ramp up the use of multiple and varied data, which has been challenging, given that we've not had state testing. And then we're also instituting a new universal screener this year. And the overall goal of integrating many systems, academic, behavioral, social, emotional into one. So what does MTSS and COVID have in common? Both are built on a medical model. And so the idea of tiers, and Jerry alluded to this, thank you, Spencer. The notion of universal tier, targeted tier intervention comes into play just like we did with our COVID protocols. Universal precautions are those that are grounded in prevention. It's the idea that we want to prevent cases from occurring. That's the truth. The same is true for learning. But when it comes for COVID, for example, we wear a mask to prevent things from happening. We wash our hands. And right now, we have vaccinations, which interestingly enough, the notion of eighty percent of the population that should be served by what we do at the universal level is also what is said to achieve herd immunity. That's why MTSS and the prevention model used in the medical field are one and the same. So our students, eighty percent of our students should be certified at first year. And if they're not, then we don't necessarily have a strong tiered model, which I'll talk about at the end. Targeted would be we address the symptoms and we reduce the effects in the FOP. So if someone has been exposed, they might step away, might be a select group, but the whole point is to bring students back into the fold. And with that, if we have, if we have twenty percent of those students receiving services, we'd want to reduce that down to fifteen. Because our end game is to make that number as small as possible. As we move to intensive, which is that person-centered individual support. And I want to highlight for you this white bar in the center, which is not necessarily seen in most models. But that would be the place where we might call exceptional learning. We might say that it's a place where exceptional learning rests. That may be a student or a person who has special needs. So that they're part of our universal tier, we just provide accommodations so that they're served by the universal tier. And let's go to the COVID example. Let's say I go to intensive. I might need one-on-one care with a doctor, but let's say that I might not have transportation to come in. An individual response for me, mindful of my needs, might be teletherapy or a phone call, rather than me going into the ER. So those students are always a part of the hundred percent universal. And I just want to clarify because sometimes this model has been used as a way to get to referring students for special services. And that's not necessarily what it was designed to do. Remote learning, I just want to bring that up. Remote learning was a particular challenge because it is not in the universal tier. It is not a universal core strategy. We have issues with equity, diversity. And so what's important to note is sometimes you might have a strategy that's appropriate, appropriate for tier two or tier three, but not necessarily to push down to all. And so when we wrestle with what to do during COVID, a lot of it has to do with remote learning is not necessarily a universal strategy. It, all our students don't have hundred percent access, so we're building a bit on a rocky foundation to start. And that becomes a challenge. So what are we currently doing? Well, we know that a tiered practice, if used right and the foundation is strong, we can accelerate learning almost by two to three years in one year of instruction. That's why that foundational tier one is so absolutely critical because you have to build on a strong, a strong foundation. A successful system of intervention has to be built on that effective four-one program. And that a traditional responsive intervention is that if you're not serving eighty percent of your students, it's time to rethink and revise. But for sure, given where we are and what role remote learning has played, we're definitely in there regardless. We need to rethink and revise what that tier one looks like and the interventions built on that tier. So with that, that brings me to tier support two point O. This I don't want to necessarily go over in depth. But what I wanted to highlight for our district is what makes Salamanca, Salamanca? And also re-envision this triangle. So on the left-hand side would be the teacher-team responsibilities. And the least restrictive environment, the learning environment would be a classroom. And so on the, in those gray areas are the things that are owned by teacher teams. This is important because typically RTI has been thought of as being just instructional and the ownership of classroom teachers. So what I've done is re-envisioned this so that you can see that actually we're all invested on every single side of that triangle. Some of it is instructional, some of it is school-wide. And just a few examples would be bus transportation. We provide it to all our students. Free lunches, we provide to all our students. School nurses are a tier one intervention. The hiring of family school liaisons for every family in this district is a tier one support. There are other examples that just move to more, to smaller examples, such as we might have restorative circles or general counseling. But on the top tier, if we need to pick up a student, that's a tier three intervention where we go out, we get that individual student and we bring them in. Or we might have student support team meetings, which we have at the building level, that are aimed to help every student. So if I were to go to this next slide, it's the same slide we done, but I'm going to show you just a couple of things that are important to know. One, the data points, I'll come to this in a minute, the data points can move back and forth. So one thing that we really need to be really, need to be clear about are the tools that we're using to determine the moves up and down and that access is guaranteed. If there's a problem or a challenge, or even if it's someone who is gifted and they need to have a tier three support, that access, equitable access needs to be provided and based on criteria around tools that we use thoughtfully. The other thing is a shift. Sometimes in the second tier, it looks like small group instruction. But what we want to do, much like this graphic shows, is we want to take a skill that students need to learn and we organize students around that skill so that we help them learn that skill and then they can more fluid and flexibly move. And then intensive, as I look at it, because I support our interventionist, I'm looking to see that each child, even though there may be a group of three, each child is being served individually during that instruction. It should not look like three children getting the same thing. That would not support a tier three model. And then down the center is exceptional education. So next steps. First, I say we need a booster shot in tier two, excuse me, tier one. And that might mean pulling down some of the strategies that we know could be supportive from tier two to tier one. Small group instruction based on targeted skills might be something that we put down. But that is something that we would be working with the building principals and are currently conceiving and working together along with Penny and the coaches, as well as working with Jerry and Krista. But our goal should be, regardless of COVID or not, are we serving eighty percent of our students? If we're not, it's time for us to do it. Second, we need to evaluate the tools, criteria and time we use to provide access to tier two and three services and to make sure that those services are those that need to meet the needs of our students. And last, we're integrating multiple systems using technology within and across buildings into one system to promote consistency, collaboration and communication. So again, bringing all those systems together in one with similar tools, similar technologies, similar processes. And I would have to say the staff, including the building principals, have just been outstanding partners in helping me figure out how we can do that together. So with that, it brings my presentation to a close. Those were the four questions, five questions I hope to have answered. If you have any questions for me, I would love to hear.
Does anyone have any questions? Comments? Okay. Thank you very much, Sandy. Next, your mathematics presentation?
Kelly Clarko is going to present on Propex behalf on what we've been doing with math up to this point. What's been interesting is we've had to approach reading and math very differently. Math, some of our kids already had a good base of initiative prior to the pandemic, so had done a lot of hands-on activities. So we saw a different impact from the math perspective on different grade levels compared to the reading. So with reading, we really looked at the phonics impact was really a huge impact on second grade. Second grade with math has been a lot better because they had all the manipulative practice and all of that. Whereas our first graders, I would say, have a bigger gap with that just because they didn't get a chance to interact with the manipulatives as much being via Zoom and all of that. So, but Kelly's been he making sure that we're really targeted with that and really focusing on the tier one path with math on a consistent basis to catch those gaps.
All right. So I guess we need to start at the basic level here. So what is good math instruction? And I think when you think about what Sandra said about booster shot of good tier one instruction. So math instruction has definitely changed over the years. So really what we're looking for in a classroom is developing conceptual and procedural understanding. So conceptual understanding is really the understanding of how math works, why we need math and how we apply math to new situations or to a larger context. And procedural fluency would be more like, I have this skill and when is it appropriate to use it? So that, that how we how, so that we are more accurate, efficient and flexible with what we're doing. Which is very difficult for students. A lot of times we'll know it back, but then we don't know when to apply it. So that's where we struggle with our problems and things like that. Another piece that we want to keep adding to our math instruction is discourse during math time. Where students are the ones talking most of the time and teachers less of the time. So less lecture, more conversation where the kids are really talking about their mathematical thinking and how they're thinking about solving a problem. And I would use this strategy over this, over your strategy, blah, blah, blah. And explaining how they would solve a problem. So we really want to see kids talking about math and thinking about math. And then developing perseverance when solving math problems. So one thing that was interesting that we learned this summer is about kids being in a state of inefficiency, which sounds horrible, put them in a state of inefficiency. So state of inefficiency would be if a student had a problem, nine plus forty-two, and their no-two strategy was to count down, starting at nine and wanting to count down to forty-two. That's not very efficient. And pretty soon that, that child is going to be like, well, I ran out of fingers and toes and I don't have enough neighbors to help me out. So they're in a state of inefficiency. So what we want them to do, instead of going over to that child and saying, oh, well, if you started with forty-two and counted on nine, that would be easier for you. We want them to discover that on their own. Because when they discover it on their own, that learning becomes more embedded. And then because they're, they're doing the thinking themselves and working out that problem inside their own head and realizing and understanding that community property without me saying it as it. I might lead them in that direction or push them toward that, but it's okay to have kids in productive struggle where they don't know the answer right away. As teachers were extremely nurturing. And so we see Johnny struggling for two seconds and we're like, maybe we got it. So we can move on. And so therefore we take away that really important line that they need to have on their own. So as teachers, we need to really be okay with kids being in productive struggle, struggle in that state of inefficiency and allowing them to discover some math on their own. So math instruction at the primary level, to start with that conceptual and move to that procedural, it's really need to start at that concrete level. So they have the manipulatives out and they can physically move and touch and take away and put things on a map. And they physically can make math come to life. They need to stay in that for as long as they need to be there to really understand how that works. And then they move to that pictorial state where they can start to draw. And then they move to that pictorial state where they can start to draw the little linking tubes or the two-sided counter or a tape diagram. To then where they move right to the abstract, which is the expression, equations, algorithms that we're used to seeing or how we run math. So with remote learning, we kind of took away that concrete and pictorial opportunity when they were in hybrid learning. Because the kids didn't have all the manipulative component they needed. A, a lot of them didn't have the worksheets that we use. So the number lines, the hundreds chart, the number box, the pen drawing. And so we spent a lot of time wasting drawing those things and then erasing them. So a lot of learning got lost. And so I think, like Gail had said, with our younger students, they really miss that opportunity to build that concrete understanding with manipulatives and the importance of how manipulatives play in their learning and understanding. So I, I think that's where a lot of the breakdown was and where second grade is seeing a big deficit from first grade. So over the summer, we did some planning and we started with eighth grade and worked our way back kindergarten. And the overarching theme from eighth grade all the way back down kindergarten were these three major categories. That children lack, their lack numbers sense. Um, they had a lack of place value understanding and their fluency of basic math was weak. All the way from eighth grade down to fifth. So it was three overarching themes. So then we decided, okay, so how are we going to address that? So in kindergarten, um, we decided to kind of back things up for them and spend about the first four to six weeks really working at oral counting, subitizing to where they look at an image of bats and they can surmise that there's four, there's six, or whatever. Um, numbers and counting, team funding and number rating, because in Eureka, it kind of jumps right in and assumes that, that kids already have that knowledge, some of that knowledge. So we wanted to kind of back up and give them an opportunity to really develop that before jumping into the modules, which actually worked very well for them. So if you look at the red line, this is kind of where our kids came at. We really looked at just two standards. CC three is them being able to write their numbers to twenty or being able to write a number to represent an amount of that. So you can see the red, that's kind of where they came in at the beginning of the year, and the green is where they're at now with numbers within ten. So the goal is to be at twenty by June. So they're making a lot of progress. And five A is being able to answer common questions. Um, and understanding that if I have eight objects in a line and then I move each one array or I move them through a circle, I still have that same number of that. Um, so they've really done really well with that. So we are seeing growth. And the kindergarten team is very happy that they started on the year, kind of building those skills before they jump into the module with our kindergarten kids. So things are working off of that. In first grade, our plan, our action plan, um, we dedicated three days to the building back fluency toolkits, which I will talk to you about in a little bit. And then we also had what Gail told you was our tier-one math patch. So in first grade, they really focused on some counting and cardinality from kindergarten, so oral counting, because now they have to be able to count to a hundred and twenty. Um, they have to be able to write their numbers to a hundred and twenty, so things elevated. So we did a lot of counting and cardinality to see where our students were at with that and simple word problems. And so we can see here, um, modules one and two are really long for first grade and they take literally almost half a year to complete. So you can see right now we're halfway through module two and we are seeing some growth in some basic MBT and only one in a way, um, I can't even see what that number is right now, standard six A. So six A is all their different strategies that they use to solve problems. So we are starting to see some growth there with our first graders. Um, and then second grade, again, at the wind time, they are using the building back for the toolkit. We also have purchased formative loop that they do every day. And then their math, um, patch on the other three days, again, focus on counting routines because now in first grade, they have to be able to count to a thousand. Um, and they have to be able to write numbers to a thousand. So they have been using a lot of games involving hundreds chart and understanding the pattern of a hundreds chart all the way to a thousand. Um, they've been filling in number verse puzzles, which helps them with mentally knowing ten more, a hundred more, ten less, hundred less, and then that basic place value understanding. And we can see in second grade, as they've started the year off with the three, and now here's where they are with the major standards. The MBT one, two, and three are the basic foundational place value skills, which they spend the majority of their year building. And we can see that the students are improving on their place value understanding. And then we have, um, where am I? Go with five. Anyway, so here's second grade NWA, because I know you guys, we were talking about that earlier with reading last time we were here. So the red and the blue, if you look up there. So Bo is at the top. So our second graders were here for their norm and a hundred and sixty, which is the fall of first grade, and they should have been at one seventy-five. So they were technically about a year behind. This is, they just took it and they're, so people are taking it right now. Here is, um, the winter should be at one eighty-four and they're really about one seventy-two, seventy-three. So they're kind of in between here. Um, but they are showing growth. So they are moving in the right direction. So yeah, they're just about in between. So they are making growth and moving along. Of course, this was the first year that they took this test, so there, it was very interesting to take it. And it was very long, because they do take the two-five. So they got a lot of hard questions um, to start with before I leveled them out. Third grade, same thing. Um, their patch, they decided to focus on place value. Because the interesting thing with third grade is their curriculum in Eureka Math does not talk about place value except for like four lessons. The second grade spends a hundred days on place value and then in third grade, they don't really talk about it. And then in fourth grade, they spend the entire first market period on it. And they're like, why don't they remember place value? Well, it's been, you know, a year that they haven't really talked about it. So third grade is really spending more time on place value and double-digit addition and subtraction, three-digit addition and subtraction to hopefully fill that gap and not let so much time pass. Um, and then again, here's some third grade data between their module one and their module three. As you can see, they're progressing in a lot of their standard and moving in the right direction. And then if you look here, the red is where they should have been in the fall, the blue is where they ended up in the fall. And then the green is winter and the purple is where we are. So again, they're moving, but still a year behind. But they are making progress. So building backbones, I'm not sure where my slides went for that, but building back fluency is a toolkit that we purchased for addition and subtraction. And we really like it. It really provides conceptual understanding, practical application of story problems. The kids have a lot of opportunities to master this course. Um, and they're really coming along with it. And we're doing that right now in grade one and two. Kindergarten will be starting it in February. And we've also purchased the toolkits for multiplication revision, which will be starting in third and fourth grade. And and I would guess that gets right before vacation. So we need to go through those, get some PD together for them. And then we're hoping that they will start them in another month. And then obviously hit the ground running in the fall. And then formative loop, which is one of the other things I talked about. Um, the only issue with form, I like formative loop because it's very skill-based. Um, it runs the gamut of skills from addition to fractions to place value to whatever. And it's all individualized. So kids take a quick assessment at the beginning. And then from there, it prints out a sheet with that kid's name on it and what they need to work on. Um, so every kid, they have a different paper in the room and working on a different skill based on what they need. Um, the only problem with that is when we go remote, they cannot do formative loop because it is a paper pencil. Um, program, it's just scored online. So when we went remote, we started it actually in two thousand nineteen on remote in March. And then last year was hybrid, so we didn't use it. So we haven't actually used it for a whole year yet. So we're hoping to see some good results with that by the end of this year.
Hi, everyone. How are you?
Thank you.
Okay, so when we talk about doing math, um, this involves all kinds of mental capacity. When we're talking about having our kids, you know, we're doing math today. So they must really be grounded in problem-solving and their numeracy and working towards building fluency and working on concepts and reasoning. So it takes a lot to get them to build their math literacy. At Sonico, we focused on three areas this year. We said they really need to build their number sets. They need to have a strong understanding of place value and we need to increase their back fluidity. Some of the data that we've been using to guide our instruction, we've been using state assessment data, which we don't have that from last year, but we've used it in the past. The NWA assessments, formative loop, Kelly just talked about, the Eureka Math assessments, um, exit tickets that our teachers are giving at the end of each lesson, and then a running records that's been implemented at a tier-three level. Current programs being used, we have the Eureka Math modules that's aligned to the standards. It's rigorous. It involves math spreads and extra skills practice. We also have our win block, our intervention block, where five days a week, students are working in small groups um, or one-on-one, depending on their need, with guided practice and instruction for approximately thirty minutes. They're using iXls, Reflex Math, Study Islands, the math running records. There's also a Bridges Intervention and a Fletcher's Basic Math Fluency Toolkit that they're using for tier-three. This is just an overview of what NWA is. I think we talked about that a lot when we did our reading presentation. But it is a lot of narrative data that uses a RIT score. In math, NWA for grades four and five, the areas that they're looking at are the operations, algebraic thinking, numbers and operations, measurement and data, and geometry. And then when we move into grade six and seven, they start to look at operations and algebraic thinking, the real and complex number systems, geometry, statistics, and probability. So grade four, in the fall, you can see that they were approximately one ninety-nine point fifty-five when we assessed them in the fall. Um, and so that puts them right on target with where they should be in third grade. We do have some winter data. As students are taking it, we had approximately seventy-five percent of our students that have taken the math assessment at this point. So right now, we are seeing good growth. Um, their winter mean was one ninety-one point nine. Uh, so they are moving in the right direction. For grade five, um, they scored a one ninety-five point nine, which put them in approximately winter of third grade as fifth graders. Um, but as of right now, we are moving in the right direction. The data that we have as of one thirteen, they're at a one ninety-eight point nine, which would put them approximately winter of, I guess, if you go with fourth grade, fall of fourth grade. So they've made almost a year gain since the fall, which is great. For grade six, their data was a two oh five point six, which put them approximately the winter of fourth grade. And the mean currently right now is a two thirteen, which again is a year's growth since the fall. That would put them at the winter of fifth grade. And then for seventh grade in the fall, when they took this, they were a two oh seven point six. And that put them in alignment with winter of fourth grade. So they were several years, you know, performing at a fourth grade level, seventh grade. At this time, not very many of our seventh graders have completed the assessments. I don't have winter data for you. But I can tell you that teacher input is that they are growing and they're making great gains. The data tells us, like, like with reading, that a majority of our students are still performing below grade level or what we consider typical grade level. Um, they're at various levels across the board and there's a wide range of abilities. Many of the skills that were typically taught in K-three that we heard Kelly talk about, we're now teaching in grades four through six. Um, so we're just continuing to slow down, work on what's really important, the foundations, and dig deep with our students to try to build those strong foundations and build our understanding. The good news is that a lot of the data that we're showing is from September. You do have new data coming in January. It's being analyzed. Uh, but it seems like with a solid instruction over the last several months and more in-person schooling, more focused on small group instruction, we're making great gains. The teachers are reporting to us that the students are showing growth and improvement. We're progress monitoring daily. Uh, we're making sure that we're using the data to inform the decisions that we're making for instruction. And our win blocks, every student is receiving these small group instructions based on their assessments and our identified needs that's happening across the board. Uh, math and our benches are working really focused, targeted skills in tier-three, and that's really helping. We're re-teaching. We're really focusing on what those priority standards are. The coaches and Penny have identified wonderful action plans with each grade level and those have helped really narrow down our focus. And we're providing PD and we're continuing to enrich our students. Those that are on grade level or above have an enrichment block where they're going during their wind time. So we're not just holding them back. We're continuing to let them grow. And we still have our after-school tutoring, our power hours, and all of our working on summer programs to put in place. Any questions for Sonico?
Any questions?
I'm good.
Okay. Thank you.
So first, I want to thank everyone for having us here tonight. Um, I do have a couple of teachers helping me with the presentation. Who, uh, is one of our ultimate teachers, uh, at the high school. And then we have that Yale, who is our eighth grade math teacher and also our department chair. Um, what we're going to do today is we're going to go through some of the data and share that with you that we have from our NWA test. Our second round of NWA test is not until February. Um, we got midterm exams coming up next week. So we're trying to break that up just a little bit. Uh, after we discuss that, we're going to discuss some of the steps that we've taken this year already uh, and then lay out some of the plans for our future. We're going to start with that, but talk about some of the data that we want this one.
Um, so basically, it's a general breakdown of the NWA for the fall for the eighth graders. Um, as you can see, a great majority of them are either below or, um, well below average at this point, about fifty percent of them. Um, since we don't have any data to compare that to right now, if we look at that, and I, a couple of slides down, can see the differences from seventh to eighth grade. The next slide is ninth grade, which also shows the same type of information, which is just that they're, um, our ninth graders are well below average. Um, about fifty percent of them are definitely at that well below average, and we expect that from COVID. Uh, the current levels of our achievement, though, are, um, eighth graders, they're in a two thirteen RIT score, which, um, from what we've seen already, they should be at a two twenty-six, which puts them at the spring of fourth grade as eighth graders. And our ninth graders scored at the two-ten level, which they would be, should be at a two thirty. And that gives them, that's equivalent to fall of fifth grade. So they're a good fourth grade levels behind at this point in time. And, um, we don't know what that's going to look like from, um, for the. You can see that the slide from spring to fall, from our current eighth graders, from seventh to eighth grade, they took quite a deep dive from a two-twenty average to a two-thirteen. And our current eighth, or our current ninth graders also took a four-point slide from the spring to the fall. So it, um, NWA usually looks at a two-point difference from spring to fall. So we have some things to do to get them to a point where they can be a little bit closer to grade level. This is our enrollment for all of this math classes that we have. We incorporated a pre-elder class this year based on just the eighth grade needs from last year and the COVID and trying to help those kids who needed a little extra help. So we have some of those. We also have our eighth or our ninth graders and our tenth graders that take Elder one AME. And we also have a group of ninth graders that take Elder one, so they would take the regions in June, will be one. Um, we also, for accelerated students, I'm just going to skip down. We have a lot of, um, JCC classes for those. So we offer them to the, um, that, the juniors and seniors. So currently, we have about thirty-six juniors and seniors taking pre-calc or calculus or problem-solving with our, um, high school teachers. Um, even though we have Elder two is. Even though we have algebra two is one of the things that we currently offer, we do have students who take problem solving and statistics instead of, but the algebra two is something they can take if they want that advanced diploma.
We're going to move with Kayla into math projections and then some of the different structures that we have in place already.
So thank you to Kelly and Nikki for touching on all of those standards. I wanted to give you a little bit of a visual on how they build over the years from kindergarten off to high school. Now that you've kind of seen the growth, this is kind of where it comes into play. The explanation for some of the gaps and whatever the grade levels might be are kind of an indicator of where we can remedy a lot of these gaps and also how we can kind of look to the future. How will it impact? Like where are we right now? What is it going to impact in the future? So for our current high schools, since high school standards for all the courses are all kind of lumped together, we can see a lot of the ninth grade and tenth grade, the algebra one as a basis from those expressions, equations, and functions. So if there was a big gap over the last two years from that middle level, grade six through eight, we can see that impacting our high school courses because that is the first time they would have encountered that learning. So it makes sense that they would then not perform at grade level at the high school level. So that's the kind of things that we use to inform our instruction when we look at remedying where the deficiencies are at high school. We can also look all the way back to kindergarten. A lot of what we do in the high school is pre-teach. We still look at concrete to put towards the abstract, even though it's high school. We use that same model with the, with that thinking. So this is how it all plays out over those regressions. Those standards build on each other. So it really makes sense. It's not quite as cut and dry as a lot of the other subjects. So some of the interventions we're doing at the high school, we, our math department created an R T I curriculum for all of the grade levels and courses. We did eliminate the eighth grade accelerated algebra class this year because we really wanted to focus on, since they had kind of missed that in-person learning to reassess where students are. We didn't think it was appropriate to kind of jump them ahead, which now we've seen all the data that kind of seems to support that. We had created that pre-algebra course. That's kind of thinking about students that would have been okay with that one-year algebra course, but may have needed more time, maybe didn't get those kinds of supports while we were virtual. So those students will then go to the one-year algebra at that quicker pace rather than the two-year stretched out course. We're really trying to stress the algebra since that is one of those requirements for the region's diploma. So it is thoughtful and helping with those graduation rates. Our courses in our math department, teachers, we don't have, we're the ones providing the R T I and A I services, not any specialist or interventionist. We did have low attendance while we were virtual and the, the R T I was kind of eliminated once we were in a hybrid because we wanted to have them have time to focus on their core courses. For this year, our services, we are looking at scheduling some R T I in the spring semester, and we currently have a six-week cycle for enrichment and for grades focusing on literacy in eighth and ninth grade. So some school-wide supports here, we've got smaller class sizes, which has really helped. We've got that ninth period literacy block rate, the ninth, and some Bonner Venture tutors that come to school after, after school from three thirty to four thirty. School-wide initiatives that we're supporting in the math department, we do incorporate the Marzano vocabulary through every unit that we do. We're incorporating journaling in algebra and geometry. Those are both teacher prompts that are both mapping and also to get them just thinking and be writing more because I mean, that's hard to do virtually as well. We do have monthly data meetings as a math department that uses a protocol. We create action plans based on benchmark testing. And our vertical meetings do align at the curriculum. We do do ten-week benchmarks, and we'll get our data from our, our midterms coming up next week. And we have goal-oriented meetings where we follow up and support each other from each of the different courses. School-wide and math engagement has not been where we want it to be. Pre-COVID, we did an entire Pi Week at full of activities, and we used to have our Math Honor Society tutoring younger students, but students just haven't really been staying after school, and we haven't really done those initiatives this year, so. And then in the classrooms, we have some spiral review. We're continually reviewing previous concepts so that we don't kind of keep it in boxes. We have break down the content, the applications so that it's more accessible, knowing where they are with literacy and help kind of keeping that in mind so we don't go beyond where they're at. And we scaffold as they needed to fill gaps. We're also using formative polling in the classroom so that it's low stakes, so students can all kind of see where everyone is. They feel more comfortable to help relieve a lot of that math anxiety. General thoughts about the region's exams, we are slightly worried. This population hasn't experienced a high-stakes test in two years with the algebra exam. So we're trying to emulate that a little bit with midterms to get them in the field before it's a high stakes at the end of the year, just to get them feeling what that feeling might be like and to get them thinking about, okay, it's been half a year. What do we need to keep change start for the future? And we're looking at benchmark and midterm assessment based on region's questions to get that filled.
Thank you, Kayla. So some of the concerns, a lot of these concerns we shared back in December as far as with the reading presentation. However, I would like to just kind of focus on the third bullet of the deficit thinking about math among students and staff. And many of these, too many staff and students say, I can't do math. They say, I'm no good at math, and that's a fixed mindset. And one of the things that we want to try and do is change that fixed mindset to a growth mindset. And simply by adding the word yet at the end of it, we'll do that. So I'm not good at math yet. I am, I can't do math yet. So if we can kind of change that with our students and with our adults, I think we're going to see a change in their ability to actually be successful with math. The needs, teacher input for student course placement, this is something that they work with the guidance department on, making sure that the students, as they move forward from one grade level to the next, from one class to the next, they're being put in the appropriate course. I know some of the teachers had suggested, and I think Mrs. Yale is one of them, some of these students, we need to push harder to make sure that they're in the geometry class and not just choosing explorations in geometry to fulfill their math. We need to continue to promote prioritized math, improve attendance, and again, that's one of the concerns. Today's society, you know, we say we want to improve attendance, but then we also say, stay home if you're sick. So there's, there's that that we wrestle with all the time. Intervention TOSA and interventionists, one of the things that I'm requesting for next year's budget is an intervention room that will be headed up by a TOSA teacher on special assignment. It's going to organize all of our different M T S S supports specifically, especially in reading and in math. Also in this room, we'll have four interventionists. We're looking at certified TAs that would be either with an English background or a math background to help support what's going on in the classroom. This is going to be more of a proactive model than our usual model, which is reactive and waiting for a kid to fail before we put him in there. This way, the teachers can actually make referrals as they're going through the lessons. And if a kid is struggling on a certain standard or a certain topic, they can make a referral to the TOSA, and they will schedule them in out of their study hall to get that extra support for that particular standard. I'm hopeful that that's going to make a huge change as we move forward. And we might, I think I might need your help on the last one, I'm not sure. So lastly, I do want to show a TikTok. Since many of you guys are Bills fans, you may think this is a little bit sacrilege, but I want you to listen to the message and not necessarily who's saying it. So I mean, as of right now, we look at obviously what we've been through is bad. But there may be some good things to come out of it. Maybe some of our teaching practices and some of the interventions that we're able to use moving forward are going to make a huge difference with our students, and it might be something that we're going to be able to use moving forward. Maybe, you know, the perseverance of our students and things like that as they got it out through this is going to pay big dividends for them down the road. So the future is going to tell, but we'll see. We're just going to keep plugging through it. So you guys have any questions?
Does anyone have any questions or comments?
I'm good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And our last presentation is our school safety and reopening.
All right. Thank you very much. Quick update as far as where we are with some of our numbers. The district currently has eighteen employees and forty-three students that have tested positive for COVID. And those are a number as of today. In addition, there are thirty-four students who are being quarantined. Over the past several days, really the past ten days to be specific, the district has received several updates on COVID response guides. These involve the length of time for quarantine of a positive student or individual, the ability to test to stay in school for those individuals who have a close contact, and the definition of a vaccinated individual. So what I'd like to do is take a moment just to go through each one of those three pretty significant changes and explain what they mean and what some of the repercussions are. So the first thing that I'd like to touch base on is the matrix that's provided to us by Kent County. And these are in alliance, alliance or yeah, are aligned with the State Department of Health as well as what the CDC is saying. So you'll see in the middle there that the exposure to a positive person with COVID nineteen breaks down into two different categories, and I'm going to go to the right side, which is green. If you are fully vaccinated and boosted, okay, or you're vaccinated but not eligible for a booster dose. So in other words, you were, you received your second dose of a vaccine within five months. Or you have two shots typically for Pfizer and Moderna and have been boosted. Then we go to the right side. If you are able to wear a well-fitting mask, then there's no quarantine required, but you must wear that well-fitting mask for ten days. For us in school, they have to wear a mask all the time, so that's sort of a moot point. So in the event, just to summarize, we have an individual who comes in contact with an individual who has tested positive. So through our interior or school contact tracing, if this person has been fully vaccinated, and I'm saying fully vaccinated multiple times because this goes to essentially a new definition of what fully vaccinated means. It means you have, for Moderna or Pfizer, received two initial doses. And then if it has been five months, you have received a booster shot. If that is your circumstances, then you just continue on as normal. If for one reason or another, you're unable to wear a well-fitting mask, then you need to quarantine for ten days. And that really hasn't changed too much. Now, in the event that you are exposed to an individual and you are either not vaccinated or you are vaccinated and are eligible for a booster but have not received that booster, then you have to quarantine for five days. Okay, that is a relatively significant difference from what we have done in the past. Normally, if you were a vaccinated student or staff member, regardless of what your booster status was, you were essentially on the green side. You wear your mask, everything's great, you carry on. Now, if you are eligible for a booster and have not been boosted, you are essentially considered unvaccinated or follow that chart. So in this particular circumstance, you need to quarantine for five days from the last exposure, test if possible on day five with the frequency and the amount of tests we have that's now possible. If you test positive, then you go enter a positive case, which we'll talk about shortly. But if you have a negative result, then you are good to return. So what has essentially happened is we have decreased the quarantine period from ten days to five days if you are asymptomatic and essentially test negative. Now, within this timeframe of those first five days, the district is recommending that we follow the county guidance of implementing a test-to-stay program. So I'm just going to stop right here and just ask if there's any questions on the contact flow chart. Okay. Now, the district's test-to-state program. The test-to-state program only applies to contact with a positive case, okay? And you are either unvaccinated, excuse me, or vaccinated and did not receive a booster shot and are eligible to. So the first part of this all aligns to where the guidance comes from. Here you'll see who is the test-to-state is applicable to. So it's any individual, a student, faculty, or staff member who has had a close contact and that that close contact occurred in a school setting. So there are a significant number of conditions that must be met in order to do the test-to-state. So your close contact occurred in a school setting. It could be in a classroom. It could be a sporting event, an extracurricular activity. It could be on a bus. If you, if the person who is exposed is unvaccinated or is vaccinated but eligible for a booster, that's what I had mentioned before, the person needs to be asymptomatic, so totally free of any symptoms of COVID. And for the most part, any symptom of illness is considered a symptom of COVID. From a head cold to a headache to a cough, whatever that might be, the person needs to be completely asymptomatic, and then they would be eligible to enter into the test-to-state protocol. The extent, what happens with this person now is that that first five days where they would typically have to quarantine, they now can return to the normal school events. But within those first two days or five days, rather, they need to test twice. And that testing occurs in school in order to stay in the school. Thus, the reference to test to stay. So the tests will be conducted before the school day starts at Sonica Intermediate. In the event a individual tests positive, they're isolated and follow our standard procedures there and would be sent home. The exposed person who is in this protocol is allowed to remain in school throughout the test-to-state program. They do need to be quarantined technically outside of school. So they will be permitted to participate in after-school and co-curricular and athletic events, but when they go home, they should be quarantining at home. Any student who ends up participating. Any student who ends up participating in this program has to have sign consent for testing by the parent or guardian. And they are allowed to continue to ride the school bus, but they have to follow all of the guidance, including wearing a mask. Let's see, we will continue to put this program in place as long as we have the ability to continue the testing free of charge. And that looks to be significantly more likely now as best gets becomes greatly more available. So. The test to stay protocol applies to unvaccinated or vaccinated and unboosted individuals who have come in contact. With a COVID positive person in a school setting. They do not have any symptoms. Within the first five days, which is typically when they would be quarantined according to the normal flow chart. Instead of being quarantined, they can test twice in order to stay enrolled and active in school in person. They are still permitted to ride on the bus. When they get off the bus, they will go right to Seneca Intermediate where they will. Go through the test. They have to have permission from the parents. We're not just implementing this randomly. So parent consent must be on file. If they test negative twice during that five-day window, then they just return back to the general population. Mr. Bryant, how do I do with that? Any particulars?
One clarification, as we were sitting here in the board meeting, the state education department dropped a guidance memo at approximately five thirty. And it does talk specifically, which is kind of the norm. We spend enormous amounts of time talking about the what, where, when, why and how. Of what we think the guidance is, which has been clarified since last week regarding the participation in extracurricular or after-school activities and it seems. Clear that the state has clarified that if a child is twelve years or older. Eligible to be boosted but not yet boosted. Who has been exposed to an individual with COVID nineteen, they cannot participate in after-school activities. Aside from school attendance, instruction to and from school. So this was a topic of great discussion this afternoon based on. What we thought the guidance was, but at approximately the time of the board meeting starting, the state dropped more clearance and guidance. So it appears as though. Co-curricular activities, if you are not fully vaccinated and eligible for a booster and you have close contact, you cannot do after-school activities. At this point in time, we'll get more clarification on that if that is truly what the written words mean. It appears to be that way, but other than that, Dr. Beeler, spotlight.
Okay.
Has anybody tried to test? An eight-year-old or lower yet? I had to put my son in a headlock.
Right. Well, I. Actually, our nurses really haven't. I know that this has been very successfully done in other school districts. Grant Island was one who initiated and really started. I don't know if it was all the way down to an eight-year-old. But they have expressed that this has been very successful. And again, this is all done in coordination with the parents to make sure that they have full consent. So I just wanted to mention that this is a great example of something that we have dealt with pretty much every day, if not two or three times a day. Over the past ten days is that we sit down, we, you know, look at the guidance. From the state, then the county might change it and then we sit down, identify what it is and then maybe the county within a matter of a day or two will change it again. So other than the fact that we need to simply modify this so that the test to stay individuals. Can only attend school and not after-school co-curriculars or athletics, which is really disappointing. This is the test to stay program as we have it outlined here. And the last situation, so to speak, is to discuss the positive case individual. So. Previously, if an individual tested positive for COVID, they were quarantined for ten days, period. If they were, did not have symptoms, they could return at that point in time. We've seen that that has been changed significantly. In fact, that time has been cut in half by the county. We had some discussion here internally over the past week that we initially thought we would keep it at ten days, just to err on the side of safety. But what we have found is that there are one of two cases. One, the person at the five-day point or even at the one, two, three or four-day point really had no symptoms, period. And were symptom-free. Or at the day five and six point, they still had some symptoms and would not be able to return. We also found that with the contact tracing that the county is doing. Everybody is getting quarantined for five days, period. So by us telling them ten days, the county telling them five days, it added even to more confusion. So the recommendation at this point is to simply follow the Catteravas County Health Department guidance, which I'll go through right here. So an individual tests positive for COVID. If they are severely immunocompromised, then they isolate for ten days. Those are some relatively specialized circumstances. The majority will slide over to the left, in which case they isolate for five days. From either the point in which they collected the test or the onset of symptoms. After those five days, if the symptoms are resolving or are gone. Then if they are able to wear a mask, which everyone in school has to wear a mask, then the isolation ends. So what has happened here is. After five days, if they are either asymptomatic or the symptoms have resolved pretty much completely. Their quarantine time period is over. If after the five days, the symptoms are not resolving, then they stay in isolation for an additional five days. So the big change here is that instead of a blanket ten-day quarantine, whether you have symptoms or not. Now that is being reduced to five days if you do not have symptoms, but continues to be ten if they, if the individual has symptoms. And again, so for this case, there is no test to stay. This is simply the way it's significantly more cut and dry. Are there any questions on this practice? All right. Yes, sir. Okay, so our current safety plan indicates that we will follow the CDC and the Department of Health, Catteravas County Department of Health guidelines. So we will update, actually, we had already updated the grid plan. Now we have new guidance. We will update that once again tonight. So tonight essentially serves as a formal communication of our new guidelines, which we will begin to implement tomorrow.
So a couple of additions to that. The question regarding masks has come up. We had a conversation regionally with our BOSIs. Through some quick work on the part of Karen McGarrah and working with, I believe, Amy Windus at BOSIs. We've secured a shipment of N ninety-five and K ninety-five masks. Which are what are recommended for the type of fitting masks or the majority of our adults and students that may need them. So they should be arriving very soon, if not within the next twenty-four hours. And I believe that we were able to get a significant. Financial break on that by purchasing them in bulk through BOSIs and they should even be available. So. Those, those should be arriving soon. We have approximately six hundred and fifty test kits available that the district received last week. And I'm told we will be receiving another shipment tomorrow, not quite as large. And I have this afternoon, early evening, sent an email to Julie Creed, our nurse manager, and Ray Haley, our director of safety. With some protocols and what we're going to do, pick those up tomorrow if we need to. Believe the batch that's coming tomorrow, if you look on the backside of the boxes, they have an expiration date near the QR code. If you are taking at-home tests, one, they do have an expiration date and that is impactful. For you to get accurate results and two, don't leave them in your car. They are negatively impacted. Due to extreme temperature, particularly in Buffalo cold and the southern tier. So don't leave them in your car. You may be essentially taking a test that won't give you an accurate reading and could compromise your health and the health of others. The last piece that I want to kind of piggyback on what Dr. Beeler had said is, and similar to what Chris Seibert had said, you know, I'm not good at math yet. This is our best plan so far and it's going to continue to change. And I would imagine after the dropping of the memo. From state ed with further guidance that that will further call for a conversation in the field about what does this actually mean now? What we know is this is the best, most current information that we have. We demonstrated for the last twenty-two months that if something changes, we'll change and we'll try to do our best to keep up with that. The one piece that has changed, which we really didn't touch on, is the contact tracing. There's a website now that the county is directing people to for self-reporting of contact tracing. We've done it internally with some of our staff that have been exposed. We've done it with staff that have not been exposed to just see how it looks and works. It's very simple. That is where staff and parents will get orders for quarantine and release from quarantine. So we will still continue to do our level best at contact tracing with individuals within our organization that need to be traced. However, we are directing individuals to a site that the county is monitoring just because of the sheer volume of individuals. That are needing to be contact traced. And in the event that a person is in a position where they cannot access. The internet, we will do that with them, for them on their behalf, so they can get into or out of the system based on their circumstances. I do want to give a shout out to Ray Haley, who I see on the call, and Julie Creed, who is also on the call, and our other school nurses. They have done an incredible job as all of our staff have done, but an incredible job. Of helping us identify students and staff that are exposed and need to quarantine or can come off quarantine. This has been a full-time job for Ray, Julie and Josie Hubbard and the personnel office. They've done an incredible job. And I just wanted to publicly acknowledge. And I think that's all I have. On that subject so far.
I'm all set as well.
Okay, any other questions on COVID?
Okay, let's move on to communications. Do we have anybody from, for public comment or title sex?
We do not.
Okay. Then we'll move on to central office message. Let's start with Karen.
Karen is excused. She is not at the meeting today.
Okay, then how about Dr. Beeler?
I'll just take a quick moment. I just wanted to express my gratitude to all of the individuals who we saw present tonight. A fifteen or twenty-minute presentation takes hours and hours to put together and that does not go unrecognized by. Anyone that you presented to. So I wanted to just extend the gratitude of all of us for the time then that you've invested into those presentations. That twenty-minute presentation, you know, represents not just the hours that you put into it, but days and weeks and months worth of work that led up to that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. So let's move on to our Board of Education message. How about if we start out with Dale?
We started out with Beatrice, so how come?
You there, Dale?
I'd just like to say thanks to everybody who were presented tonight as well. I think some of the data was very eye-opening to the board. For, we have some work to do and I look forward to seeing how all of the interventions that we put in place are effective for our students.
Thank you. Brad?
Yeah, I would just like to echo that and say thank you and looking forward to next year and seeing how all these interventions change those numbers and what we can. Experience the two or three-year growth.
Okay, Carrie?
Yeah, I don't have much tonight. Just keep plugging along, everyone.
I can't believe you didn't make a comment about the snow. I mean, this is your weather, Carrie.
No, do I, do I really need to? Everyone knows by now.
Everybody knows, that's right. I just wanted to say too, thank you to everybody that presented tonight. Although sometimes we don't like what the data is telling us, at least we know where we are. And we have to know where we are in order to be able to make the changes and. And put in the interventions necessary to get our kids back up to speed. And I did appreciate the TikTok. Mr. Seibert showed because you just don't know what can come of a situation and. I hope we're always the district that does try to think outside the box and how we can help our students best. To help them get to be successful in whichever way that is. So. Thank you to everybody that did present and that's all I really have. So I'll turn it over to Bob for his message.
Thank you. Again, I'll echo my appreciation sincerely and deeply to our presenters. It is hopeful. Looking ahead for the board members. On our February first agenda, we will have a presentation by Stiegblitz and Turner relative to our current capital project work and ongoing project work. We will also have a presentation by our instructional coaches and I'm sure an update on our safety presentation and plan. In March, we will have some presentations on equity and some upcoming summer work with regard to that. Mr. Shep, who's on the Zoom, does not know this yet. So Justin, we'll talk tomorrow. On tonight's agenda, we have our NAFIS National Association of Federally Impacted Schools DC trip is a, is on. The board agenda for approval. This is for our students and our staff advocates who've been working all year. On a curriculum that you approved on helping our students become better advocates for themselves. And causes that are important to them. We're still working out the details as they will not be at the entire NAFIS presentation. That would be a little cruel and unusual to make them sit through three days of professional development. The plan is looking to develop participate on Monday. And then we will spend the majority, if not all day Tuesday on Capitol Hill. Just, you may look at some of the paperwork and there's some funding mechanisms that were left off blank. That's my issue. The funding is going to come from the contingency line. As we weren't sure if we were going to be able to actually have the students participate. I've had multiple conversations with the conference organizers about vaccination and immunization. So we should be all set with regard to that and that is. March twelfth through the fifteenth. I believe those are, the dates are pretty accurate. Earlier today, I'll end on a high note, I guess. Earlier today, Governor Hope released the state budget and on January fifth, she gave the state the state. But today she dropped what we actually know is the budget book. The outlook is looking very promising and now we'll just await specifics and details. We're not exactly sure when those will come out. We had hoped to have some preliminary aid runs from the various statewide organizations, NISBUD, NISCUS. NICOHS and a few other state organizations. In fact, I would say it's better than a good start. This is actually the best start for public education. In my memory, which as an educator dates back to around nineteen eighty-six. Some of the highlights from Governor Hope's budget book, a two-point-one billion dollar, B with a B, billion. Increase in state aid for schools. Year two of the foundation aid phase-in plan. Originally, this was included in the twenty-one, twenty-two state budget. And this will help to generate one-point-six billion dollars in new foundation aid. According to the budget book, each district would receive a minimum three percent increase in foundation aid. Full funding of expense-based aids generating four-hundred-and-sixty million dollars increase over current aid levels. This is statewide, not just sell right now. Authorizing the state education department to provide forgiveness. On building aid or transportation penalties. Again, not a concern for us, but there are several school districts geographically. That are near us that have had paperwork snafus that have generated significant losses of state aid and this has been an ongoing lobbying effort. Temporary waiving of the thirty-five-thousand-dollar earning cap for retired teachers and other school personnel. To help address the needed shortages in schools. Hundred million dollars in state matching funds for high-need districts to help address student well-being and learning loss. More than $1 billion for a state initiative to provide affordable broadband access in rural and urban school districts across the state. So all in all, this was a very promising budget book dropped by the governor. And as we know, for the last 12 or so years, when the former governor would drop the budget book, it would be gloom and doom. And then we would advocate hard and aggressively with the Senate and the Assembly in the state to carve out any additions. I'm very optimistic that this basement level is a very good level. It's hard to find anything negative in this budget. Except awaiting the details and what that will look like. So overall, very good. It's a good day to be a public educator in New York State with this kind of support of public education. I've sat here before and have been very critical of the elected officials at the executive level. I can't do that. I won't do that. I would just simply say thank you. And Mrs. Ray, I'll turn it back.
Okay, thank you. And we'll move on to our consent agenda. So we need a motion to approve the items under the consent agenda.
Motion second.
Was that by motion by Brad, second by Dale?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, T-Ray. I want to make a motion to table the NAFIS topic under consent agenda. Bob, I'm glad you brought that up, but this is something that I have a lot of concerns over. And this is something we haven't discussed as a board. So I want to make a motion to table that portion of the consent agenda.
Oh, okay. So we have a motion to table the NAFIS. So are we gonna, and are we gonna approve? Should we just approve all items except for NAFIS?
I have no issue with other items under consent. I just want to have more discussion on NAFIS.
Okay, so Janet, what's the best way to do that?
Best way to do it is for Brad Early to change his motion to reflect that he, you'll approve everything except for the NAFIS and for Dale Colton to change his second to coincide that way.
I'll change it. One second.
Thank you.
So then we have a motion by Brad, second by Dale to approve the, everything in the consent agenda except for the NAFIS travel.
Just a comment on that. We're fine to do that. And I understand those concerns. But we would really need to take action on February 1st or because of logistics and travel arrangements. It would essentially die in committee if we're going to use the legislative terms. And it likely wouldn't be able to occur with reservations and travel accommodation. So we've got time, but we would have to make a de-formal decision by February 1st of the next agenda, the next board meeting.
Yeah, I was well aware of that, Bob, but I still have concerns.
Gotcha.
Okay, then we have a motion by Brad, second by Dale. All in favor? I opposed, abstain, motion carried.
And then I make the motion to table that portion.
Well, didn't we just approve it without it?
Yeah, we won't have.
So Janet, do we have to make a second motion or no?
No, you won't have to because the motion has been made to approve the consent agenda items without the NAFIS information. So that's, that's done now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. With the clarification, so we have no old business under new business. We have our SSSO MOA. So we need a motion to approve the MOA.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Dale, second by Carrie. Are there any questions? All in favor? I
I
opposed, abstain, motion carried. Item B is our STA MOA. So we need a motion to approve that MOA.
A motion.
Motion by Carrie.
Second.
Second by Brad. Are there any questions? All in favor? I opposed, abstain, motion carried. And then item C is our rental space. Agreement. So we have a, we need a motion to approve moving forward with our contract for rental space.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Dale, second by Carrie. Are there any questions?
Not a question, but I just want to make it perfectly clear in the public forum that this is not to be approved or we're not going to go forward as long as the dispensary is located in that building. I think everybody realizes that it's there. You could drive down the main road and see it. I'm approving this with the understanding that it will not be there when we take occupancy.
That is my understanding also.
Okay, so we're, can we add that in there, Janet, that as long as both Dale and Carrie are okay, that we're approving this agreement based upon no dispenser, dispensary being in the, in the building itself.
On premises.
On premise.
Absolutely. I'll, I'll, I'll get that wording to reflect that.
Okay, Dale, you're okay with that?
I am.
Okay, then we got a motion by Dale, second by Carrie. All in favor?
I
abstain, motion carried. Item 10 is our personnel consent agenda. So we need a motion to approve the personnel consent agenda. Motion by Brad. Second by Dale. Are there any questions? All in favor?
I
opposed, abstain, motion carried. And then do we have anybody that we need to introduce, Bob?
We do. We have an individual on the Zoom call who has spent a significant amount of time influencing children who is retiring. And I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Pavone for some comments, and I'm sure I'll chime in too. Ms. Pavone?
I am not thrilled to be talking about the retirement of that individual just because she will miss. But Pam has been at Prospect for a long time, impacting our youngest learners. She taught kindergarten for five years, did transitional kindergarten for 11, and has currently been in UPK for six years. She's been a mentor, a team leader, and also volunteers for our various activities at Prospect. I am happy for her and she is looking forward to new adventures with her grandkids and continuing running. And I'm sure we'll do a race together here.
And I would just like to add, you know, one of the first classrooms I saw when I came to the district was the pre-K and the kindergarten classrooms over at Prospect. And if you ever need to organize anything, invade a country or plan a wedding or do anything, you really should spend some time in our kindergarten and pre-K classrooms. Pam, you have been an exemplary leader in our primary education program. And I think of how many children you impacted in your classes, but also that were in other teachers' pre-K and kindergarten classrooms and primary classrooms. Your level of engagement with our faculty and staff and our students and parents is really something that's unparalleled. And we have been deeply and measurably beneficial because of the work that you've done in the classroom. I echo Gail's comments and I'm sorry to see you go. I understand it, but I want you to know, and if you ever, ever wonder the impact you've had, I'm just here to tell you it is immeasurable. And I thank you profoundly from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate it. It's been a good run.
Congratulations, Pam.
Thank you. Thank you.
Those are the only introductions for this evening on the call.
Okay. You will be missed, Pam. Thank you for all your years of service. Been a great employee. Are going to move next to item D, which is our unpaid admin leave. So we need a motion to approve the unpaid administration leave of absence.
Motion.
Motion by Dale.
Second.
Second by Carrie. Are there any questions? All in favor? I opposed, abstain, motion carried.
It won't carry. It won't carry. Sorry to interrupt.
Why?
In favor, one opposed?
Oh, I'm sorry. Who was opposed? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. All right, then. Motion is defeated. We'll have to go back to the next board meeting.
Yes.
Okay. All right. And then item 11 is our board information and reports. We have our first reading of some policies. We have our IEC meeting. That was a 12th, sorry. Upcoming events, NISBA. And our next Board of Education meeting is going to be February 1st. So Carrie, any questions you have, if you can just shoot them to Bob so we can get question about NISBA and whether or not we're putting it back on the agenda.
NAFIS.
I'm NAFIS, thank you. Not in my right mind here. And with that, we need a motion to adjourn.
A motion.
Motion by Carrie, second by, was that Brad? Okay, motion by Carrie, second by Brad. All in favor?
I
opposed, abstain, motion carried. Thank you, everybody for attending.
Thank you.